Number 695. Charles C. Green and the Al petitioners versus County School Board of New Kent County, Virginia, at Al. Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Chief Justice, may it please the Court. This case is here on writ of certiorari to the Fourth Circuit. The case involves the public schools of New Kent County, Virginia. There are but two sex schools, each with its elementary and high school department, serving grades one through twelve. There is no residential segregation in New Kent County. White families and Negro families live in every part of the county. Yet, three years ago, no child of either race had been brought into contact with persons of the other race as a part of his normal, daily, public school experience. In March of 1956, when this action was commenced, some 739 Negro children attended George Watkins School located in the western half of the county, and some 522 white children attended New Kent School located in the eastern half of the county. Eighteen Indian children living in New Kent County were transported by public school bus to Samaria Indian School in adjoining Charles City County. For more than ten years, the County School Board of New Kent has simply ignored this court's decision in school segregation cases, and we submit they had no intention of complying unless required. Negro citizens of the county petitioned the school board to end racial segregation in the school system; they too were ignored. On March 15, 1965, thirty-six Negro schoolchildren and their parents brought this class action in the eastern district of Virginia, praying that the school board be required to adopt and forthwith implement a plan which will provide for the prompt and efficient elimination of racial segregation in the public schools. This action, so far as its having brought in a result, may as well have been ignored. On June 1, 1965, when the defendants answered, they said, in effect, that the school board has no duty to desegregate the schools, and if any Negro parent was unhappy about the attendance of his child at the Watkins School, he need only to apply to the Virginia People Placement Board for transfer of the child to the New Kent School. And such is the board's position today, except for the fact that the board has reassumed the responsibility of assignment and transfers, and the further fact that the State People Placement Board no longer exists. After the school board, the school officials had filed that answer, they found themselves faced, as many school boards around the country have faced, with the threat of losing federal funds under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. So, like most other school boards in the South, the New Kent Board on August 2, 1965, while the litigation is pending, adopted what was basically a standard Freedom of Choice Plan, meeting what were then the minimum requirements of the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare. Essentially, this meant that any child or his parents could, only before May 31 of any year, choose whether the child would attend the New Kent School or the Watkins School. Now, of course, the predictable practicality of the adoption of the Freedom of Choice Plan was that no white parent was going to choose for his child to attend the Watkins School, and only the more aggressive Negro parents would risk their child being an unwanted intruder at the New Kent School. On June 28, 1966, the district court approved the plan as supplemented; there were some additions to provide for faculty desegregation, which did not come into effect the following year. The case was retained on the docket with leave to either party to seek further relief, the court's memorandum noting that it may be necessary, or may become necessary, to revoke, in full or in part, the approval which the court had given the plan. But meanwhile, thirty-five Negro children had broken tradition by enrolling in the New Kent School in the fall of 1965. On appeal by the plaintiffs, this case was, and the case against the County School Board of Charles City County, it's now was Bowman, I recall, were argued in the Fourth Circuit on January 9, 1967. And at that time, some 111 Negro children had obtained assignments in New Kent School. No white child was enrolled in Watkins School, and no white person taught at Watkins. One Negro teacher visited New Kent two days per week, or the equivalent. Indian children were still being transported to Samaria School over in Charles City County at all times before. And today, the picture in New Kent is just slightly altered from that. The Indian children are now, Indian children now attend New Kent School. Some 115 Negro children, an increase of four over the previous year, attend New Kent School. But 621, and that's eighty-four percent, of the county's Negro schoolchildren attend Watkins School, completely isolated from all of their white and Indian fellow citizens, except one white teacher who was assigned to Watkins School initially this year.
The Indians were assigned to the white school?
The Indians were assigned to the white school beginning this year.
What was the reason for that change, do you know?
I don't know whether it was pressure from the H.E.W., whether, it probably was a requirement of the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare. I'm only surmising that.
I see.
Such are the facts fourteen years after this court's concluded that in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. The Court of Appeals' opinions were rendered on June 12, 1967, the basis for the decision being in the Bowman versus County School Board of Green County case. The majority opinion by Chief Judge Haynesworth states what we consider two contradictory propositions which we feel this court has to resolve. First, the majority says, and nobody would disagree with the abstract statement, that the burden of extracting individual pupils from discriminatory racial assignments may not be cast upon their parents. But, the holding of the majority is totally inconsistent with that abstract statement, where it is said that the school board may not be required to make compulsory assignments to achieve a greater decent intermixture of the races, or, as is otherwise stated by the majority below, that the Constitution does not require that he, the individual pupil, be deprived of his choice, freely expressed. In sharp contrast with this holding, Judges Soboloff and Winter emphasize what we think the true constitutional imperative in this case is, and that is, that freedom of choice is not a sacred talisman; it is only a means to a constitutionally required end, the abolition of the system of segregation and its effects. Using as nearly as we can language suggested by the respondents, we would state the issue here as, in these words, "The County School Board of New Kent County, Virginia, has a constitutional duty immediately to assign children to each of the public schools so that children of all races will attend schools indiscriminately." And in support of that, we argue two propositions that Brown contemplated, that this school system would long since have been converted into a unitary, non-racial system, and second, that freedom of choice, in the context of this case, is merely an impermissible expedient to evade a constitutional duty. On May 17, 1954, this nation, indeed the entire world, was electrified by this court's holding that Negro children being segregated in the public schools were being denied equal protection laws. Now, many Americans were jubilant, some were relieved, many were disappointed, but there were done who questioned what the court meant when it decided that in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. From that point of departure, Americans have come to accept the demise of the doctrine of separate equal in other areas, but it still lingers in the area in which this court first pronounced it, or pronounced its demise. Having settled the basic issue, the court then addressed to counsel and directed re-argument upon two questions, including a question four which posed two alternatives. A, further decree would necessarily follow, providing that within the limits set by normal geographic school districting, Negro children should forthwith be admitted to schools of their choice. Or B, might the court, in the exercise of its equitable powers, permit an effective gradual adjustment to be brought about from existing segregated systems to a system not based on color distinctions? Now, the respondents argue in their brief that the quandary that was facing the court at that time was freedom of choice now, or gradual progression to a system which would allow freedom of choice in some indefinite time in the future. We do not so read the questions, but in any event, this court's 1955 resolution of its question number four said nothing about the choice of any individual. On the contrary, the court directed that there be, among other things, revision of school districts and attendance areas therein into compact units to achieve a system of determining admission to the public schools on a non-racial basis. It was obvious that such revision in large and complex school districts would require more time than would be required for a simple school district like New Kent County with two separate and equal schools. Hence, the court charged the district courts to allow time where necessary, but the lower courts were directed to bear in mind that the burden rests upon the defendants to establish that such time is necessary in the public interest and consistent with good faith compliance at the earliest practical date. In New Kent County, with two schools, it would have been a simple matter to assign all children in the western part of the county to Watkins School, and all of the children in the eastern part of the county to the New Kent School. Or, one school could have been made the elementary school, and one school could have been made the high school. Either of these could have been done overnight, and but for Virginia's infamous massive resistance, we say that the earliest practical date for compliance in New Kent County was the first day of school in the year 1955. The respondents do not suggest in their brief, or at any stage in these proceedings, that there are or ever have been obstacles of administrative character to justify delay in making the transition. On the contrary, they have deliberately selected the only available alternative, cumbersome though it may be, by which segregation might continue. This they admit, where on pages three and four of their brief, they say that their adoption of freedom of choice was designed to honor the educational imperative of the system. By that they meaning, that if they should desegregate both schools, that white patrons would withdraw their children from the schools, from the public schools. I think this suggestion was answered by the court in 1955, when it said that it should go without saying that the vitality of these constitutional principles should not be allowed to yield simply because of disagreement with them. We think the answer was reaffirmed in 1958, when this court considered the Little Rock case, Cooper versus Aaron. We think the same answers reaffirmed in 1964 in the Prince Edward County, Virginia case. And we submit that on January 15, 1968, when this court affirmed the tuition grant case from Louisiana, that that was another answer, sufficient answer, to that threat or the possibility that white persons might withdraw their children from the public schools. We submit that in New Kent County, compliance with the Brown mandate is long overdue, that the time for deliberate speed has long run out. Freedom of choice in New Kent and in most places where it's been adopted, is just another expedient to avoid compliance with the Brown mandate. While residential segregation prevails, school boards wishing to retain segregated schools assign children to schools in accordance with their zones, school attendance areas, and thereby force the racial segregation of children in the public schools. Such a case is before this court in 1965, as disposed of, Samaria Gillum versus School Board of the City of Hopeville. Where is here, residential segregation does not prevail. The school board pleads it should not force children to attend school with children of the other race. Force is seen as normal governmental regulation when its use retains segregation, but school boards seem to make it sound horrible when used with reference to putting children of both races into public schools together. New Kent here points to dicta in the case from Atlanta, Georgia, Calhoun versus Latimer, and the case from Knoxville, Tennessee, Ghost versus Board of Education, as justifying the adoption of freedom of choice in New Kent. With those large metropolitan systems, it seems to me, the court could easily, and could easily perceive, and did perceive, of valid reasons why persons would exercise a choice, that the choice, in a large system, there may be difference in curricula or other differences by which would validate a parent's choosing one school rather than the other. But in New Kent County, the only choice is a choice of the white school or the colored school. And we submit that the state is forbidden by the Fourteenth Amendment to extend such choice to parents, and thereby permit parents to accomplish the same thing that the state is forbidden to do, and that is to racially segregate children in the public schools.
How do these two schools compare physically?
We assume physically that they compare alike. I mean, I don't know of any, there's nothing in the record that suggests otherwise, and my information is that, not a fact I've heard of.
They're more or less equivalent in quality, and how about in capacity and size?
Uh, capacity is generally the same. I mean, I don't want to...
They're more or less equivalent in physical facility?
The Negro school population is a little larger than the white school population, but I don't think that made any difference in the size of schools. I could be wrong on this.
You suggested, Mr. Tucker, that one of these might have been made the high school and the other the elementary school. What's the present situation?
Each one has an elementary and high school department.
In both?
Yes. This is the thirteenth year since Brown II. The struggle to desegregate the...
May I ask before you get to that?
Yes, sir.
May I ask about the teaching staff? Is there any difference in the teaching staff?
Oh, today, there is one white teacher assigned to the Watkins School, which is the Negro school. And one Negro teacher is, I take it to be from the figures given, she's given, is a point-two teacher, a point-four, teaches two days a week at the New Kent School. It may be some other explanation for the fraction, that's my surmise on it. I don't, we didn't develop any striking difference in the qualifications of the teachers. We developed, we served in derogatories on the qualifications, but we have nothing striking that we presented to the court to suggest that the inequality of the schools.
I noticed in one of these cases, at least, that the Negro teachers were paid about $200 less than the white teachers. Is there anything like that in this case?
I don't think that prevails there, no sir.
Well, is there any issue at all of faculty desegregation here?
No issue on faculty desegregation here. The circuit remanded the case to the district court to do something more about faculty desegregation, but we elected to bring the student assignment picture here. The struggle to desegregate Virginia's public schools is in its fourth phase. For four years, 1955 through 1959, we had massive resistance. The next three years, 1959 through 1962, we had State People Placement Board, or local school boards, rejecting the application of Negro children to attend white schools on the basis of criteria which were not applied in the, to determine the admission of white children to those schools. That practice was struck down by the Fourth Circuit in May and in June 1962. Then, for three years, 1962 through 1965, we had freedom of choice administered by the State People Placement Board. The Department of Health, Education, and Welfare came to the picture effective of the fall of 1965. Now, the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare is seeking to expand or to accelerate the desegregation of schools, but they can only require such speed as the judicial opinion seems to require. Today, the New Kent School Board says that if any of the inequalities that were noted in the Brown decision managed to survive the Fourth Circuit striking down of the discriminatory criteria, that they were clearly overcome, and everything was made all right on August 2, 1965, as if by the wave of a magic wand, when the New Kent School Board formally adopted a plan labeled Freedom of Choice. They said that was all they had to do, the schools, by that act, desegregated. By its own resolution, it claims to have become a neutral party, without interest in and without responsibility for the continuing struggle between those who want New Kent Schools desegregated, to be segregated, and those who want every vestige of segregation to be removed. And these kinds of struggles are going to continue as long as school boards and federal judges can read judicial dicta and make semantic arguments containing that public authority is not required to use the more or the most expeditious means of accomplishing total, rather than token, desegregation. And the most famous of such dicta is one that was composed forty-five days, I believe it was, after this court's remand of the Brown cases, and the one called Briggs versus Elliott, the one that came from Clarendon County, South Carolina. And the court had convened with counsel to consult of the type of decree to be entered, and before counsel had an opportunity to make a suggestion, Judge Parker read from the bench the, what has become a very famous and much quoted dictum, and it's there it sprang the notion, as he said, that the Supreme Court had not decided that the states must mix races, persons of different races in the school, or must deprive them of a right of choosing the schools that they attend. Or, as he otherwise expressed it, that the Constitution does not require integration; it merely forbids discrimination. Now, analyzing that dictum, the factual basis for it was entirely false, because at that time, there never had been, there never was, any right of persons to choose what school they would attend. Not in the, and certainly not in New Kent County, and nowhere in Virginia, and I dare say not in Clarendon County, South Carolina. But now, in the language of the Fourth Circuit, majority in this very case, that right so blandly assumed has been accorded an overriding constitutional dimension. The legal conclusion stated in Briggs that this court had not decided that the state must mix races of persons of different races in the public schools, and that the Constitution merely forbids the use of government power to enforce segregation. Those legal conclusions were in the very teeth of what the court had just held, that the states failing to mix persons of different races in the public schools denied to Negro children the equal protection of laws. The Briggs Doctrine has been very thoroughly analyzed in the historical, and the cases referring to it have been collected by Judge Wisdom in United States versus Jefferson County, 372 Federal Second, at 386, beginning of page 861. The Briggs Doctrine was very solemnly rejected by Judges Soboloff and Winter in this very case. But unfortunately, it is still living law as far as the Fourth Circuit is concerned, and that is why we are here. So, we urge, in the words of Judge Wisdom written in the case of Singleton versus Jackson in 1965, that at this time, that Judge Parker's dictum in Briggs versus Elliott were laid to rest. We ask that the cases be reversed. Thank you.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Chief Justice, may it please the Court. A few years ago, there was a very popular parlor game called Gossip. And the game was played by a person writing down a little statement on piece of paper, not letting anyone see what he had written, and then whispering it to the person on his left, and letting it proceed to be whispered, one person to another around the room, until it finally was whispered back to the person who had uttered it. And he would then state aloud what had been whispered to him, and read aloud what he had originally said. And the point of the game was that the results were usually very amusing and sometimes quite startling, that the change that had come to be in what was said originally and what got back to him, because the message gets garbled in the transmission. For over thirteen years now, since this court decided the Brown cases, the cases have been talked about, construed, and interpreted in the courts of this land. And I think that we can very quickly point out some of the results and similarities to the game of gossip, by reference to portions of the brief.
Does the game that you mentioned, do you have in mind that the players would try to repeat it accurately, or that they would try to distort it?
The attempts, Your Honor, were supposed to be that everyone would try to repeat as accurately as possible.
Do you think that is comparable to these segregation cases we've had in recent years?
I think, Your Honor, that the courts of this land have tried as accurately as they can to repeat what this court has said, yes, sir. I don't think that any of the courts have tried to distort the Brown decisions. Your Honor, I would recall in the oral arguments, of course, the oral arguments in the Brown case, Mr. Justice Frankford, at one point, in questioning counsel, asked whether or not he did not think that, in a decision of this magnitude, the court should not fashion its language with fastidious accuracy, was his direct quote. And I think that, Your Honor, in writing these opinions, chose language very carefully because of the significance and importance of it. And for that reason, I think that we have to go to the Brown decisions themselves to determine what this court meant when it wrote the Brown decisions. If I may point out to the language on pages 30 and 31 of the appellate's briefs. In speaking of Brown II, the appellate's say that this court presupposed major reorganizations of the educational systems, and that the direction of Brown II said that the lower courts were held to consider problems relating to admission, arising out of physical condition of school plants, the school transportation system, personnel revisions, revision of school lines, attendance areas, and so forth. But this, Your Honor, was not, as I understand Brown, and as it has been understood, this was not a direction to the district court that all of these things of necessity need be revised. This was said in response to the request that time needed to be granted, and Your Honor said that the district courts, in determining with what speed the district court must require the school systems to move, could take these problems into consideration, that these things might have to be done, in order to achieve the results. But there was no direction that all of this be done.
But what consideration did they give between 1954 and 1965 in this county?
In this county. Your Honor, please, in this county, in New Kent County, Virginia, immediately following the...
Beg pardon?
In New Kent County, immediately following the Brown decisions, the state of Virginia undertook all pupil assignment function. The State People Placement Board had the pupil assignment function. The county school board had no control whatsoever over student assignments. When the State Pupil Assignment Board was abolished, and New Kent County, Virginia, again had the pupil assignment function. This was the first time that New Kent County, Virginia, had the assignment function after the constitutional provision in Virginia requiring the segregation of the races was struck down. The first action which New Kent County, Virginia School Board ever took after Brown was to adopt a Freedom of Choice Plan, that every child in the county could go to the school of his choice. That's the first act that these defendants ever took.
When was that act repealed?
Uh, Your Honor, it was sixty... Sixty-four, I believe, Your Honor. I believe it was sixty-four. Now, going forward with this quotation or this reference in the brief, Your Honor, please, and the point I'm trying to make here is that what we have before us is, what you have to decide today is, does Brown compel integration? That runs, that's what runs through these three cases. And at page 31 of their brief, the appellate's here attribute to this court, as I read what they are saying in the middle paragraph of that page, they say that the court did not stop saying that compulsory racial assignment shall cease. Here's a direct quote from their brief now. "But the court did not stop there. It ordered, rather, a pervasive reorganization which would transform the system into one that was, quote, 'unitary and non-racial,' end quote." Now, as I read this, this purports to be a direct quotation from Brown, and I cannot find it in Brown. I find it in Jefferson, only recently decided. Now, this goes to the very heart of the case. I cannot conceive, Your Honor, that Brown ordered compulsory integration. Mr. Tucker has referred here this morning to the fact that in Briggs against Elliott, which was one of the five cases before this court, at the time of the Brown decision. Forty-five days after the decision, Judge Parker, on the fourth district bench, handed down the decision that what the court has done is strike down compulsory segregation, but it has not ordered compulsory integration. And it is inconceivable to me. Call it dicta, if you like. In its original utterance, perhaps it was, but it didn't remain dicta very long. It has been adopted by one court after another across this land, and it is inconceivable to me that it could stand, in the repeated cases that have come before this court, and stand as a guide for the courts of this land, if that were not the meaning of Brown when it was given.
Has it been uniformly accepted? Has that...
I think, Your Honor, until the Jefferson case, it has been generally very uniformly accepted, yes.
In the Fifth Circuit?
Beg pardon?
In the Fifth Circuit?
The Fifth Circuit in Jefferson County. It's the first case which departed from the conception that compulsory integration is not required. Uh, I think, Your Honor, in preparation for this matter, attempting to determine what Brown meant, we have reread the arguments made before this court, and the briefs filed before this court. And I sincerely say to this court that if you were to reread those voluminous arguments and the briefs filed there, you would quickly come to the conclusion that you weren't even asked. That question wasn't even here. Uh, Mr. Justice Marshall was distinguished counsel in the case for the petitioners and plaintiffs there, and I, on two occasions, on December the ninth, in the Briggs case, on one, at one point, he said, "My emphasis is that all we are asking for is to take off the state-imposed segregation. It is the state-imposed part of it that affects the individual children." And on another point, we are not asking for affirmative relief. And on another point, "We are not asking for affirmative relief. Striking down the statute will not put anybody in any school. The only thing we ask for is that the state-imposed racial segregation be taken off and leave to the county, the school board, the county people, the district people, to work out their own solution to the problems to assign children on any reasonable basis that they want to assign them on." So we urge, Your Honor, that in deciding this question, the issues that are here, that you return to Brown, uh, Your Honor, in, in determining the validity of constitutional and statutory provisions requiring segregation, both in the states and in the District of Columbia, you laid these provisions down alongside the Fourteenth Amendment in the case of the states and the Fifth Amendment in the case of the district, to see if they squared with the Constitution. And we say that you must go back to the Constitution and lay down freedom of choice alongside the equal protection clause and read the equal protection clause. No state shall deny any person within its jurisdiction equal protection of the law. Now, that's the test, and that is what we ask the court.
Mr. Gray, did you have freedom of choice before sixty-five?
For three years before sixty-five, uh, sir, the pupil placement board, the state pupil placement board accorded any child assignment to the school that he chose. Now-
You didn't have freedom of choice before sixty-five, right?
The county did not have a freedom of choice plan, sir.
And the first one that this county ever put on was sixty-five.
The first time that this county had the authority, after the Brown decision, to assign children to school was sixty-five.
You didn't have it before sixty-five.
The children had the right prior to sixty-five to apply to the state pupil placement board, which controlled the assignment of all children.
Well, do you now say that the pupil assignment plan of nineteen sixty-five was adopted without regard to race or color?
I say, sir-
Do you say that?
I say, sir, that the pupil placement plan of nineteen sixty-five accords to every child in New Kent County, Virginia, the right to go to any school in the county regardless of his race, and accords to him full equal protection of the law.
It had, it was for the purpose of giving children freedom of choice, and there was no question of the race problem at all.
It was to give-
Is that your position?
It was to give children freedom of choice to attend whichever school they want. Mr. Justice-
Was it, was it brought about because of the Brown decision or not?
Oh, unquestionably, it was brought about by the Brown decision, yes, sir, because prior to-
So, race was involved in adoption of it?
Race had to be involved in adoption of it, sir. Prior to that, prior to the Brown decision, the Constitution of the-
Was it-
Constitution of the state prohibited the mixing of the races.
Well, Mr. Gray, was it adopted with any purpose other than to perpetuate as much segregation as you could?
Mr. Justice Marshall, let me answer you in this manner, if I may. As I conceive the situation in New Kent County as related to Brown, prior to the Brown decision, with two schools, one in each end of the county, in New Kent County, there was a fence. There was a legal fence across that county, and the law of the state of Virginia said to the white children, "You go to school A, and you may not climb that fence and go to school B." And it said to the colored children in the county, "You go to school B, and you may not climb the school, the fence and go to school A." And this court, sir, said to the county, "Take down that fence." And it was taken down by the Brown decision. And the school board said to the children and says to the children, "There are two schools in this county. Look them over, regardless of whether you are white or colored. Look them over and go to the one that you choose." And the appellate's here today are saying to this court, "Choices are not being made that suit us. Put fence back. Build a fence in New Kent County, Virginia today and say to certain of the white children, 'No, you may not go to school A, because all white children can't congregate there, and because some of you are white, you must go to school B.' And to say to the colored children, 'No, you may not all go to school B, you must go to school A, because we can't have you congregating in school B.'" And it seems to me that we have gone full circle.
Well, is it quite, is it quite like that, uh, Mr. Gray? I thought, I thought the, the idea was that you might create school, two school districts.
But for what reason, Your Honor?
Well, no, but you might create two school districts, and you might say, "All the children who live in school district A, without regard to color, shall attend school district A." When I went to school, that's the way they had it set up in my hometown. I, I had to go to the school that was set up for the district in which I lived.
Well, if, Your Honor, that is a vehicle which would be used. That is a device which would, would be used to do it, but for what reason? It's just inconceivable to me that I stand before this court, the highest court in this land this morning, defending the school board of New Kent County, and at this very moment in New Kent County, we're denying somebody, something. We're denying equal protection of the law. That's what they say. I don't, it, the, the language of the decisions doesn't bother me. Are we violating the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment? That's what we have to square with. And at this very moment, in New Kent County, Virginia, every child in the county, just happened by coincidence, the choice period is open right now, from now till the first of May, and every child in New Kent County, Virginia, has one of these choice forms.
Has there ever been a white, uh, white child, uh, admitted to the, to the colored school?
No, white child has applied to go to the colored school, no sir.
Well, isn't the net result then that, uh, that although they, they took down the fence, they put booby traps in the, in the place of it?
No, sir.
So that there won't be, uh, won't be any, uh, white children go to a negro school?
No, sir. Not unless the free-
Isn't the experience of three years in that county where there never has been a white, uh, white child go to a, uh, a, uh, the negro school, isn't that some indication that, uh, it, it, it was designed for the purpose of having a booby trap there for them that they couldn't, didn't dare to go over?
If, Your Honor, please, if the free choice of an American citizen is a booby trap, then this plan has booby traps.
Yes, and, uh, didn't we, didn't we say in Brown that we couldn't let the, the, uh, the feelings of the community delay this deliberate speed that we spoke of?
But deliberate speed to what, Your Honor? Deliberate speed to the granting of equal protection of the law.
That's right.
Not to the integration of a school system. Not to the integration of a school system. I, I ask you, sir, who is a plaintiff in this lawsuit? I think you get to the question there. Who is a plaintiff? Who can stand before the bar of this court and say to this court, "I am being denied my equal rights"?
I think if I was a negro in, in Kent County, I would say so.
But, sir, by signing this piece of paper, you may go to either school that the county offers.
But the social and cultural influences and prejudices that have existed for a century there are themselves written in that, into that, that-
If, Your Honor, please, over three years of operation of this plan, first year, thirty-five white children chose to go, uh, colored children chose to go to the school. Your, Your Honor, ask a question about the Indians.
Yes, yes.
Let me, let me parenthetically, uh, explain that situation. There had been, uh, for years, uh, Indian tribes who lived on reservations in New Kent and Charles City County, Virginia. They wanted their own school system, and they had their own school system, until the adoption of the freedom of choice plan, being modeled on the, the guidelines of H E W, which, which say that you may not transport children out of a county or into a county to preserve any form of racial segregation. And for that reason, we had to take away from the Indians the schools that they would have preferred to keep, but they chose the school to which they went, just like every other child in the county. But, Your Honor, it is just inconceivable that anyone could stand here and say to this court, "I'm being denied equal protection, because as Your Honor said in Brown one, public education, when the state undertakes to provide, must be given to all on equal terms." Now, I say, Your Honor, that any child in New Kent County, Virginia, can get any educational facility which New Kent County offers by the mere signing of his name to the-
Mr. Gray, on this freedom of choice, assuming a negro parent wants to choose to send his child to the, what they label for the purpose of this, the previous white school, and his employer says, "I suggest that you not do it," would that be freedom of choice?
No, sir, that would not be freedom of choice.
Well, do you think that's happened?
No, sir, I do not. In this case-
This is a different, this is a different county, isn't it?
Mr. Justice Marshall, in the case before this court, in the Fourth Circuit, there was an admission before the bar of the court. Judge Haynesworth took into consideration the very type of factors that you mentioned, and he said, "Of course, if, if there were any extraneous pressures, then it wouldn't be a free choice. But there is an admission before the bar of the court in this case that the choices are free and unrestricted." And in the-
Is that here?
Sir?
Is that directed before us?
That is in the, that is in the appendix, uh, page sixty-eight of the appendix. It's in the opinion of the Fourth Circuit, and in the brief of the appellate's in this case, at page twenty-two.
Sixty-seven. Twenty-two?
No, in the appendix, sir, at page sixty-eight is, is Judge Haynesworth's statement. In the brief filed by the appellate's at page twenty-two-
Where is it?
The white brief at page twenty-two, they say, "To be sure, each child was given the unrestricted right to attend any school in the system."
Well, I also see a quote down bottom of that same page. It doesn't seem to say the same thing. "The very nature of a free choice plan and effective longstanding community attitudes often tend to preclude or inhibit the exercise of a truly free choice by or for the minority group students."
They are quoting there, if, Your Honor, please, from the guidelines, the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare, speaking of this situation across the country generally. But in this case, which was presented to a court of law, counsel for the appellate's admitted that the children have a free and unencumbered choice. If we're not going to talk about free choice plans, then that's something else. But what we want to talk about is where they do have a free choice. And in this county, a hundred and fifteen children of the colored race have elected to go to the white schools. They are going to the white schools. There is not one shred of evidence offered by anyone that any one of them has been in any way abused, that any parent has lost his job, that any pressure has been exerted, and the school board, in notifying the parents of their plan, tell them that they will be admitted to the school of their choice, to all of its activities, that there will be no coercion, no punishment, nothing of any kind used against them. So it just isn't in this case to say that there are pressures.
Is this in the case any place, the reason that this plan was chosen rather than some other plan?
I, I'm sorry that I didn't understand.
Is there anything in the record to show that the school board of New Kent County adopted this plan rather than some other plan?
There is nothing in the record to show any reason why the plan, why one plan was chosen over another, no sir, there was not.
Nothing to show that there was any consideration at all of setting up school districts?
There is nothing to show why, why they chose the, the freedom of choice plan, no sir.
Do I, uh, correctly understand that, uh, now, a hundred and fifteen Negroes attending New Kent School?
A hundred and fifteen Negroes attending New Kent School, yes, sir. And of course, Your Honor, that, as I said, the freedom of choice period is open at this moment. We don't know what, uh, what choices will be made for this coming school year.
Is there anything in this record to show where the hundred and fifteen Negroes live?
No, sir, there is not. There, there, now, if I may answer, to, as to this hundred and fifteen children specifically, no, sir, it, the record does show, in answer to, uh, interrogatories and in the evidence which was developed, that generally, the pattern of, of residences is throughout the county. Uh, there's no-
Well, I understand that, I understand that, but are the, but are the, are the hundred and fifteen Negroes going to New Kent School, mostly Negroes who live around that school?
There, I do not know, sir, and the record does not show. I, I-
If a Negro-
Is there, is there state, uh, transportation for, for-
The buses, uh, take children to all, both schools.
Uh, and, uh, Negroes living far in the, in the, uh, uh, Watkins End of the county, uh, could get transportation to New Kent?
Yes, sir, yes.
Along with the white children who live in the White-
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The buses-
There must be a good many white children living in the Watkins End to attend the, uh, the now, uh-
Yes, the buses serve the schools. If you, if you go to the school that this bus is going to, you ride that bus. There, there's no, there's no segregation on the bus.
And I gather the colored children who live in the New Kent School area are bused over to the Watkins area.
Watkins area, if that's the choice that they make, yes, sir. That's correct.
What, uh, what would, uh, uh, what would you say if the state, uh, said, uh, put out the free choice form, and then at the bottom, last line was, "Why do you choose this school?" And, uh, uh, the, uh, and the, uh-
Well-
And, and the, uh, parents, uh, put down, "I prefer to go to a white school," and the Negroes put down, "I prefer to go to a negro school," uh, and, uh, transfers were allowed on that basis.
Uh, I think, sir, uh, what the court would say, but I know what H E W would say. Because, uh, they very specifically, and, and of course, in the adoption of the plan, we also adopt this provision, uh, they are so fearful of the subtle pressure that, uh, Mr. Justice Marshall is speaking about, that they would never permit you to question why he was, why-
Well, is there any evidence in this record as to why these choices were made?
There's no evidence in this record, Your Honor, but I can say to you why they were made. Uh, they, they were made because in a rural Virginia county, the colored school is the community center of colored activity. It's the, it's the hub of their social, they don't want to lose that school. This is the heart of their social life and their community center. They, they go to that school because they want to go there. In my home city, it was my home city of Hopewell, uh, we want to, thought was given to consolidating the high school into one high school that was, they were based on residential patterns, was a colored high school, which was on one side of town, a white high school on the other.
Would you think it's unfair to say that, uh, that the choice, pre-choice plan, uh, the way it operates here is, in effect, uh, authority to the parents to make their choice based on race?
Well, the white choi-, well, the, the white child, uh, parent certainly cannot choose to go to a segregated school, because he does not go to a segregated school. Uh, they, the, um-
But it isn't if they, if, if, if parents, uh, uh, well, do you think it's unfair to say that or not, that a parent, to the, to the extent that, uh, to the extent there are racial differences between the two schools, uh, is it, is it an authority to parents to make that a, a factor in the school?
If, if, Your Honor, if we were going to, if, if we, the only way you could do that is to say that no one but white will go here, and this isn't the case, uh-
But the state is saying to parents that is, uh, the state is saying to the parents, "Now, look, as long as you, uh, if, if all of you parents got together in the county, if you had a countywide PTA meeting, and you parents decided that we would just like to have a white school and a negro school, and all the parents, all the parents of the negro children are going to go to the negro school, and all the parents, the white, all the, and the parents of white children, etc., are going to send them to another school." Uh, that would be permissible under this plan, wouldn't it?
I-
To the extent that the community itself-
Yes, it would be permissible under the plan.
In a big town meeting, decided to have, uh-
It would be permissible under this plan, and I think it would be permissible under the Constitution. Your Honor, if I may answer you in this way- Your Honor, if I may answer you in this way, I have time to make this answer.
Oh, yeah.
It seems to me that prior to Brown, the government of my state and the government of many states, for reasons sufficient to the government, determined that it's better, for one reason or another, it's better that white children go to one school and colored children go to another school. This court struck that down and said, "You may not have compulsory segregation." When it was stricken down, this county at least has said, "All right, our answer to that is let every child go where he wants to go. We deny no one anything." And now, people stand before this court and say to you, "The right choices aren't being made." And the only reason that-
Who signs, who signs those forms?
Beg pardon?
Who signs those forms?
The parent, guardian, or if the child has reached the ninth grade or is fifteen years old, he may make his own choice. Uh, either the per-
Mr. Gray, those things you outlined to Mr. Justice White about the feeling in a local rural community in Virginia, and that they would prefer to go to their own school and all, would I be fair in assuming the school board knew that when they adopted this plan?
Yes, I think you would, sir.
Then the plan was conceived in an atmosphere of race.
The plan was conceived, sir, by a school board which had the duty, the sworn duty, to try to preserve public education and to better fu- public education in New Kent County. They had before them, certainly in law at least, some alternatives. I presume they could have, if they chose, put the name of every first grade child in a paper bag and say, "All right, we'll do it by lottery. We'll pull out, and this child will go to this school, and this child will go to this school, regardless." They could have done it by pairing the schools, one as an elementary school, one as a high school. But as long as they did it in a manner that did not deny to any child the equal protection of the law, they did it constitutionally. They chose the plan which they felt would preserve the public education system in New Kent County, Virginia, for all of the children and to give them the equal protection of the law. And I say to you, sir, that there is not a child in New Kent who can stand before this court and say that the school board of New Kent County is denying me anything. Every facility is open to him, and I say to you, if it is an ed- education, an integrated education, if that's what the colored plaintiff wants, I can provide it for him this morning. If he's in the courtroom, he need only sign that form and check the New Kent School, and he will have a fully integrated education. Thank you, Honor.
Can you say, can you say to us that there are no community attitudes that pervade that county?
Uh, Mr.-
Which would militate, which would militate against a negro child saying that he wanted to go to the white school? Can you say that to us honestly?
I think, Your Honor, that I can. New Kent County and Charles City County were adjoining counties. Both of them have a colored population larger than the white population. In New Kent County, Virginia, and I think that the appellant's very wisely chose not to proceed with the Charles City appeal which they started to bring here, Charles City County has progressed a bit farther along the line. In Charles City County, a great many of the elected officials are co- members of the colored race. In New Kent County, of the governing body, there are four men on the governing body, one of the members of the governing body is, is an negro. In Charles City County, one of the members of the school board who adopted an identical freedom of choice plan is an negro and who felt that if we afford everyone the free opportunity to go where he wants to go, we do not deny him equal protection. I do not believe, sir, that there is any community activity. The race relations in New Kent County, Virginia, are excellent.
Don't we find, don't we find, though, in many counties that, uh, that the larger the negro, uh, population percentage-wise, the greater the, the, uh, animosity is toward their participation in things?
I think that, I think that generally speaking, sir, that, that is true.
So, so the large, large size of the negro population of New Kent County wouldn't, uh, wouldn't bring one normally to believe what you just said.
Well, I can only say to you, sir, as I've said before, that this record, in this lawsuit, recites in the court's opinion and in the brief filed here, they admitted in the bar of the court, they have a free and unrestricted choice. Now, if you want to send us back on evidentiary hearing as to whether there are community pressures militating against their choices, that's, that's another thing. But this case on this record has to be decided on the basis that they do have an unrestricted choice.
But aren't, aren't we entitled to take into consideration what has happened in that county for a hundred years before?
I don't know what you mean by what's happened in that county for a hundred years before, sir.
Well, I mean, your, your, your segregation in all, in all things, not only in schools, but in everything, your, your buses and your trains and everything else.
Well, I think that-
Where you segregate them.
I think that, that is in the-
Aren't we entitled, aren't we entitled, and, and wasn't the court entitled for law? Shouldn't it have taken those things into consideration in determining whether this was an honest effort to desegregate these schools?
I think that it did take that into consideration. Certainly, it was entitled to. It was a matter of law up until the Brown decision, that it was constitutionally permissible to have separate facilities, and this court had put its stamp of approval on it. So it was, I think that what you should do is look at what has happened under this plan.
Without relation to anything that's gone before.
To see if this plan is working fairly, look at what has happened under this plan.
Is it, is it accomplishing the purpose of Brown or his progeny, uh, when, when there hasn't been a single white child go to that school that is entirely negro? Is that accomplishing any purpose for, uh, for Brown?
As I understand Brown, its purpose was to strike down compulsory segregation. That has been totally and completely accomplished. If it is your purpose-
And if it, if it referred those cases to the district court for accomplishing that purpose, has the purpose been accomplished?
The compulsory integration does not exist in New Kent County, Virginia.
Mr., uh, Mr. Tucker, oh, oh, uh, I, well, you, you finished, haven't you?
We understood that the rebuttal would be, uh, done at the end of the three cases.
Oh.
After the solicitor general's argument.
Oh, I see, I see, all right. Good idea. Time. Uh, that completes, uh, Green versus County, uh, School Board of New Kent County, is it? Very well.